I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for Brian Cox, who passed away Thursday, midnight, and the recent news of Woodmoat closing and the effect it has on the lives of all their employees and the families of employees. Thank you, please have a seat. Is there any audience comment on the gen item at this time? At this time, will Joanne Chapman, please come up, your special guest? If you can introduce yourself to everyone, please.
I'm Joanne Chapman, CEO of Greater Susquehanna Valley United Way.
Mark Cox works with the Day of Action, the brand insurer, a member of Day of Action.
So, we're going to present the Greater Susquehanna Valley United Way with the Caring Award from Sunbury that certifies that the Greater Susquehanna Valley United Way has provided great service to the city of Sunbury since their incorporation in 1961. Since 1998 and annually thereafter, they have brought together volunteers and organized the United Way Day of Action. The April 29th, 19 United Way Day of Action included eight to four Shikilumi High School students, teachers, and other volunteers. The continued actions of Greater Susquehanna Valley United Way helped to make our community stronger and a better place to live, work, and visit. Thank you all. Would you like to speak a little about what the United Way is and how it helps us?
Sure. United Way's mission is to fight for the health, education, and financial stability of every person in every community. We have been located in Sunbury as our headquarters since, by our count, 1961 is when we were incorporated. We've merged with a variety of United Ways over the years. At that time, we only served the city of Sunbury and the surrounding area, but we now encompass three counties. However, as I said to the mayor last week, our commitment has been to remaining in the city of Sunbury, making the city of Sunbury a better place to live, work, and play. I counted, our United Way does a variety of things. We used to just be a funder. We still do that. That's about a third of our work. We have over 13 programs, 13 funded partner agencies, more programs than that that we fund in the city, everything from the YMCA to the Mediation Center, AR transitions, and programs like that. We also convene a variety of community members around key issues. Our priority issues are public transportation, financial stability, teens, early childhood education, diversity and inclusion, and behavioral health and addiction. And so, I actually looked out and said to Randy, just before, how many community partners are in this room and familiar faces? And it's because of you that we're able to do the work that we do, so we're really grateful. Day of Action in particular is a day that we host every year that Randy coordinates and with support from committee members like Mark Cox and administrative support from Stephanie Thomas, we bring together over 400 volunteers to a variety of locations across the valley. And I think Sunbury has the largest concentration of volunteers, in part because of the support that we've had from Shikilumi School District. So, we are really honored to accept this award, and we look forward to expanding our programs in the city of Sunbury.
Right, thank you so much. I'd like to present a proclamation for Mental Health Awareness Month for May. Whereas one in five adults experience a mental health condition every year, one in 17 lives with a serious mental illness such as schizophrenia or bipolar disorder. Whereas half of mental health conditions begin by age 14, and 75% of mental health conditions develop by age 24. And whereas every individual should have the opportunity for early and appropriate mental health screening, assessment, and referral for treatment. Whereas public awareness and mental health education, prevention, and services are essential to improving the mental well-being of our communities, and there should be no stigma attached to anyone seeking mental health. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Kurt Kurlovich, being Mayor of the City of Sunbury, County of Northumberland, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, on behalf of the City of Sunbury Councilmembers and citizens, do hereby declare the month of May 2019 as Mental Health Awareness Month.
These young people are part of the Thelma and Cattie Ginn's Leadership Program, and they are part of the Parent-to-Parent, which I'm on the Advisory Council. And the work that these three and the rest of the group in the city is amazing. They've just had their mental health awareness program in Shamokene. I offer them Shamokene, we do it different places each year. And they volunteer many places in the community. They're a very active group, they're a very caring group, and through Parent-to-Parent and our Thelma and Cattie Ginn's Leadership, we're all very, very proud of them. That's Kristin, Felicia, and Horace.
Now, since we don't have the council meeting at the end of the month, whereas the city of Sunbury supports the rights of every citizen to experience equality and freedom from discrimination and harassment, and whereas all people, regardless of age, sexual orientation, gender identity, race, color, religion, marital status, national origin, or physical challenges, have the absolute right to be treated fairly with respect. And whereas the city of Sunbury accepts and welcomes people of diverse backgrounds and believes a diverse population leads to a more vibrant community, which contributes greatly to our neighborhoods, culture, and social fabric of our city. And whereas lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer communities contribute to the cultural, civic, and economic successes of the United States of America and the city of Sunbury. And whereas we must acknowledge the need for continued education and awareness to help end discrimination and prejudice against our LGBTQ community. And whereas I invite everyone to reflect on ways we all can live and work together with a commitment to mutual respect and understanding. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Kurt Kurlovich, being Mayor of the City of Sunbury, County of Northumberland, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, on behalf of Sunbury City Councilmembers and citizens, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2019 as LGBTQ Month. So, make a motion to approve the minutes of April 8th and 24th of 2019, and the reports of the Fire Department, Police Department, Treasurer, Engineer, Code Office, Police Pension Board for May 1st, 2019, and the planning commissal of April 8th, 2019. During the second.
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Easter?
Yes.
Harlow?
Yes.
Regarding the cigarette receptacles and outdoor dog waste. I have recently met... During our recent United Way Day of Action, I brought more than 86 Shikilumi High School students to our downtown area in Cameron Park and Market Street to help weed, mulch, and clean up the park. Many of the high school students approached me to give their suggestions to how to make our parks more presentable, safer, and cleaner. There were two suggestions that were constantly brought to me while I was in the park with the students. First, we should have some kind of outdoor dog waste station available with many doggy bags, like there is along Front Street, to provide dog walkers with the materials to make cleaning up after their dogs more readily available. They brought this idea because of alarming number of dog waste throughout Cameron Park. Just today, I walked Cameron Park, and there are again numerous piles of dog waste. The suggestion number two, we should have some kind of outdoor cigarette receptacles available in our parks to provide smokers with a designated location to make discarding the cigarette waste more readily available. They brought this idea because of the alarming number of cigarette waste in our parks and that the cigarette butts can actually cause harm to our wildlife if ingested by them. And the waste overall makes the park unpleasant, and the debris is discarded all over the ground. I agree with both their suggestions brought by our high school students and believe we should take into consideration their suggestions and look into placing some kind of outdoor dog waste station and outdoor cigarette receptacles to help make our city parks cleaner and more respectable. This is just discussion, this kind of like... The paperwork guys in your folders is just to give an example of what they look like. They're not an eyesore, it's something quite simple. On Front Street, we have doggy waste containers. I think they're attached to the ladders going across the wall.
I'll talk to Jody, I spoke to her earlier this evening.
One other thing, if we follow the law as far as the smoking industry goes, there's no smoking, that would never be a problem. That's a law. So, we could have no smoking in the park.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, we can. It's government, it's city property, which is government property.
It's still public property.
But it's city...
But it's city-owned.
This is a public building, but there's no smoking in this building because it's governmental building.
Are you saying you can... I'm sorry, I didn't know.
We don't need the receptacles for the park. We can make that no smoking.
So, it's not automatically no smoking just because it's...
Well, yes, there's a law, there's a law in the law system.
That's what I'm trying to clarify, I'm sorry. I'm trying to clarify, does the laws provide that we are allowed to declare no smoking or does the law provide that it is no smoking?
Any government property is supposed to be smoke-free.
Well, I'll look into and check that out.
And that includes our vehicles, everything, so it is smoke-free.
I can check that out and bring that back to the council then?
Yep.
All right, now on to the tour of other cities. I've recently met with Councilwoman Allison Barletta of Hazleton and Mayor John Brown, councilmembers, and the Magisterial District Judge Gambit of Shamokene to take an informational tour of their downtown areas. Hazleton has their Downtown Hazleton Alliance for Progress, and Shamokene has their Shamokene Area Businesses for Economic Revitalization, which are both similar to our Sunbury Revitalization Act. Both Hazleton and Shamokene are very similar to Sunbury when it comes to local downtown areas. We all had an extremely vibrant and active downtown area at one time. Our downtown areas also slowly began to die off, and stores began leaving at the onset of the malls. Now that the malls are slowly starting to fade away due to online shopping, cities are searching for what makes their downtown areas special and anchoring onto it to restructure their communities. Hazleton is embracing higher education and professional services. Located in their downtown within only a few blocks of one another is Luzern Community College, Lackawanna Community College, and Penn State University lunch pots. The city has also seen an influx of college students in their downtowns who are living in the city, visiting the local storefronts, and offering more lively and diverse community. Shamokene asked their residents and business owners what they wanted from the city, and the answer was people. And Shamokene began working with and embracing the AOA, Ambleside Outdoor Adventure Area. They are allowing all-terrain vehicles to enter their city streets during Event Call Taking It To The Streets. All the businesses that I have met with in Shamokene have all spoken very highly of the event, which brings three times the amount of people to their downtown area and businesses when the event takes place. When it comes to bringing in new businesses, both Shamokene and Hazleton are extremely business-friendly and have adapted and changed the way they handle different things in order to make the police and code departments more friendly and inviting. Both of their nonprofit organizations also truly help new business owners with knowing and understanding the rules of their city and code department, and being a liaison between the different departments and businesses. When it comes to Sunbury, decisions in the past have been kind of sporadic, and different patch jobs were done for quick fixes in the last few decades. In order for a city to prosper, we must continue the discussion of a strategic plan and rebirth over downtown area and all of Sunbury. It is not going to be a quick or easy fix, it is going to be a lengthy process so that it will truly benefit our community, and we all must work together on it. What's the point? I don't know. So, there's no follow-up or anything from those meetings? I just informed everyone what I kind of read from the two different cities.
I guess I was confused because Jody wasn't a part of that, and we weren't. So, I just didn't know if there was a plan moving forward. We had met last year with SRI to kind of talk about, you know, the Code Office and SRI working together. You know, we had that meeting before, and we were kind of working towards that. So, I just didn't know if there was something that we didn't know about as far as the follow-up.
Not necessarily. With all my free time, I've just been planning meetings with different community members and leaders so I can bring back the information to council.
I think I might be able to help follow this with the next topic. Strategic plan. So, even when I first came into this position and knowing that in my job description I'm to be in charge of or directing the community and economic development efforts, I think what's really important to that is to have an actual strategic plan. And we do have a comprehensive plan that was done in 2011, and it looks like we've done some of those things, but there isn't... There needs to be some consistent follow-through, an actionable plan, or what now the Department of, the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development would call an implementable plan. So, it's more specific on specific goals, specific objectives, specific tasks underneath them that help you reach those longer-term goals. So, I did reach out to the Department of Community and Economic Development, DCED, and I spoke to Mr. Ritzick, he's the Director of Local Government Services, or he's a local government specialist, and just asked him, how do we approach developing a strategic plan? Because in my experience in military and making strategic plans on that level, you get, you need to get the input from the grassroots, you need to get the input from other stakeholders, you know, cross-section of the community, business leaders, business owners, other organizations, residents, so that people can come to a consensus on what that vision for the future looks like, and then developing the actual goals in different areas that are going to get you to that end, that end resolve or that future state. So, what I don't have are the true expertise to lead a team through that process, and so that's why I reached out to DCED and see if they had that resource available to municipalities. So, Mr. Ritzick, his Assistant Director, and another representative from DCED are going to come tomorrow. We were able to get this meeting scheduled for tomorrow, only about an hour, just this preliminary, how do we approach this? What are the first steps to get something started to organize an actual strategic plan and event? And what does, what can DCED offer us as far as resources? Because it takes time and it takes money, and it might take a consultant, it might take, you know, some time to get this all set up. But I think once a strategic plan is in place where we all agree that these are the goals and objectives, then that makes decision-making a little bit more easy. You can say, well, we need to do this thing, we need to take care, we need to make this decision, we need to get funding for this project because it is part of the strategic plan that we are all following together in conjunction with SRI or other organizations in town, Spark. So, we're all working in the same direction, rolling together. So, that's the idea of how you're doing the strategic plan, and I will follow through DCED and bring back to council.
We've done other strategic planning. Do you have those copies? They should be...
I have the comprehensive plan from...
But I mean, before that.
Yeah, I have some...
We've stayed in here, we have...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We've spent thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars.
I think what I'm talking about is taking those and the information that's still valid in them and actually though, making it, here are our goals and here's the steps to get to those goals, and then following through. I think like we...
And you're going to do that.
That should be what I should do, is maintain a visibility of that plan and those tasks that are needed to be done, whether it's being done by me, the redevelopment authority, SRI, that we're all working towards the same thing, following through on the plan. And then there should be, there should be measurements to say whether or not we're making progress toward our goals.
And we just, on Friday, you actually threw it away, I mean, I had a chance to talk to you about it, we just met with Senator Gordon's office, they came in as a front update on the Albertson, and one of the things they were talking about as a community with the Better Opportunity Zones put together as well to kind of work towards the his plan, but also towards getting those opportunity zones filled. So, I think you're going to see a lot of community groups coming together for that pretty fast. What should we do for that?
Then you're on to rent property.
Yes. So, in reviewing our ordinances and the rental property ordinance specifically, and then comparing it to some other third-class cities or other communities in the surrounding area, I found that it probably is in need of a revision, and I want to make sure that we have specific, we are more specific about processes and standard fees on the fee schedule and what we're doing as far as rental properties go. So, I was just, I just wanted to advise the council that that's what I had found, and that's what Mr. Rechner and I had talked about, and that I'll be looking at that ordinance and updating it in the near future.
Just adding my opinion to that, Jody, bringing MEIC down might be a little bit of delay because John Moreno's daughter just passed away, and it's a little... She was walking in the airport that day, 31 years old. So, I don't know, I'm waiting on Henry to press his case.
Onto new business. Our officer in charge brought here will present the council with information regarding a police vehicle purchase.
I think most of you's got some information to pack already. However, today, I went back up and spoke with Brian Lichel, Sunbury Motors, and got a better bid, a better quote. The price, there was two prices in there moments from another dealership. They did not have some of the package that we need in our car, so Sunbury Motors matched pretty much everything that we need in the car to do what we need to do, and the new price is $37,577, which is another saving of a couple thousand dollars on that bid. It's a co-star price, so we don't need to go out for bidding or anything. I just wanted to price around, so I did price around a little bit and got some prices. And if you want to buy local, I mean, my goal is to buy local, so Sunbury Motors, I'm going to recommend that we go with theirs. There's no money exchanged right now, all it is is ordering the vehicle. It takes 24 to 36 weeks for that vehicle to come in, and they're just, they just started to make them this month. It'll be a 2020 model. When it gets closer to the end of the year, and I've been in touch with Jody and the mayor, when it gets closer towards the end of the year is when we'll have to go to a bank, try to get the financing. I did look at a couple of financing through Sunbury dealerships, and the interest rates were ridiculous, so they said, let's be private, you better run your own. I just wanted to compare and say a lot of astronomical stuff.
Are you going to get rid of one of the cars?
Though we will be getting rid, most likely, of the Crown Vic, that's our last Crown Vic. We're out of everything for that car. Most of the stuff, not most of it, some of the equipment that's already in that car will be able to be transferred over to the new Explorer. There are some things we will have to purchase, and again, that will be towards the end of the year that will get, I'll get some bids for those, get the prices for that from a couple of places that do the install and stuff like that, like the backseat, the backseat push bar, that stuff can't be transferred over because it's a totally different type of vehicle. But we don't worry about any of that, so towards the end of the year, no payment, no money, no money exchanged this year at all, it'll all be done next year, so it'll all be set probably if we get an order this week, it'll be probably delivered, ready to go by February, March in Shamokene. My just overview tonight is a motion from the council to have either the mayor or Jody just go up and sign the paperwork, just for the vehicle.
I think, Jody, after, when's the new numbers, can I ever do, have the new numbers?
We haven't.
I have.
That's what we have.
That's what I have.
So, they're both...
I, that's what I have. I just got today.
And then I looked at the other quote from the other company, and it was very, very even.
That's actually missing some of the equipment that will add to that price. And we did the numbers, Sunbury Motors is actually, they'll be $100 lower than that price, so.
Make this into a formal motion to accept the ordering of this vehicle.
Reese?
Yes.
Easter?
Yes.
Harlow?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
All right, city minister.
Okay. First on my list is, today I did receive a letter from 24-year employee Kenneth Long stating his notification that he plans to take early retirement, and he wants his retirement effective immediately, and I recommend that the council accept this notification of his intent to retire. We thank him for 24 years of service.
I'll make the motion to accept Kenny's early retirement.
Second.
Easter?
Yes.
Harlow?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
The next order of business is that the Goodwill Host Company sent us a letter that they are requesting to have fees waived to use the community youth center, ice skating rink, to hold a pro wrestling event. The event is a benefit to the company as a fundraiser to save and restore their 1950 Mac engine, and because it is one of our host companies and a fundraising event, I do recommend that we approve the waiver of the fee.
Make that into a formal motion. Second.
Harlow?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Easter?
Okay. Next order of business is Career Link. It did notify me as per the lease terms that they would like to renew the lease at 225 Market Street for another year, and they would like to do it at the same rate. They did have a rate increase for, of 2018, in 2018 of about 3%. There have been no additional costs to the city that we can substantiate for another increase, so I recommend that the city approve renewal of the lease at the same rental rate as 2018.
Question. How was it done previously? Was there just sporadic increases, or was it like a yearly increase?
The lease is built in that, only we do raise, and last year was negotiated 3% because it hadn't been raised for a couple of years, I'm not sure that...
Right, since the beginning. So, the lease was initiated in 2011, and in 2013, they did a review of the rental rate at that time. They started it at $8,125 a month, and then they continued it at $8,125 a month from 2013 until 2018, when the, it was raised by 3%. And the raise is based on actual increased costs to the city as far as utility costs, maintenance costs, those kinds of things.
So, if we would have, if we would incur a major maintenance overall, we could increase the rent in the following year.
That is my understanding, or if, you know, the electricity, to all of a sudden...
It's like here years ago, we put a lot of money up there in the heat plant.
That's how we got 3%.
So, make this into a formal motion to accept the Career Link lease?
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Easter?
Yes.
Harlow?
Yes.
Okay, the next item is the Spark Riverfront Project. Mr. Troy Foshold is here, he can explain what that is about, if you like.
Okay, I'm here just as informative. Mayor Kurt has some knowledge of this because he spent some time last fall with this, but this isn't anything major, it's just... So, I'm here with SRI, I have on some better revitalization, I'm with the Spark Committee, which is our think tank, and this probably started more than a year ago, this idea. And I'm not sure if I have the horse in front of the cart here, or the cart in front of the horse. The reason I haven't talked to you folks earlier is because we really wanted to make sure we had our act together and that this was possible before I even brought it up to your attention. had our act together and that this was possible before I even brought it up to your attention. Jody said, just that I've come here and run by you, which obviously is a good idea because maybe it's something you shouldn't do as a city. But anyhow, that's your decision. So this, let me explain the thought process. So our, our thought process was that, you know, one of the best assets we have in Sunbury is the river, and we can't see it, and we really can't use it much. So let's try to take advantage of that asset. I don't know where, where this idea came through, but I was thinking of, you gotta get up high to see the river. And maybe some of you have been to the beaches before, and I had this crazy idea. A lot of people should go up to the boardwalk and sit there. They look at the action around, look down into the ocean, whatever. Come just a way to hang out. So I thought, wouldn't that be nice if we could do this? So the idea, I'm gonna say it's a viewing platform, observation deck, whatever. Again, this is all for you folks, information. We would like suggestions, feedback in time, how you digest this. So if we were to create something up there so people could go up and do this, is the objective. We've gone with the Army Corps of Engineers because we know the wall has a lot of regulations around it. We originally were told that as long as we didn't touch the wall, we were good. You have some drawings in front of you, and basically what, the first page there is just showing you that we did put some work in this and some effort. And the lower picture there just has, looking at, if you were standing on Front Street looking towards the river, just a side view of a platform, wheelchair accessibility on one side, stairs on the other way. Our thought was to put it towards the area of Front and Market, number one, because it was wide. So after getting some, some ideas from the Army Corps of Engineers that, this was okay, then we were later told that, no, it was not okay. So we switched gears. So the drawing's an old drawing because it was built as against the wall. But if you come fifteen, fifteen feet away from the wall, you're out of the jurisdiction of the Army Corps of Engineers. Then there's also some issues where we all have to get together if this is a good idea. But then there's municipal authority has piping under there, the city may have piping under there, water suit and all that. We, we would have to go get through that. But the main thing is, no sense going down those roads if, if the city isn't interested. And the other thing that, that kind of held us back from coming to you folks is, if we wouldn't have funds to do this, or the availability of funds, why talk about it? So we do have some ability of, availability of funds now, and in the future that, or at least would be a help to this. So what, what you're looking at there is kind of a deck. The, the back page is just, again, I'm thinking of the beach, and they have those benches there where the backs tilt, and you can look one way or the other. The reason we thought this would be a good thing, most people are gonna wanna sit there, especially in the summer when it's warm, look out in the river. The other idea was if we keep it around Front and Market Street, our thought was that if we have the River Festival or other activities, never close anything down on Front Street, you can flip the benches and then go the other way. You have a concert down there. I think there's, you talk with, I know that in SRI itself, there's some talk about maybe running a couple functions and try to utilize that part a little bit, because it's pretty and nice and doesn't get used as much. So anyhow, this is just all, all kind of ideas. We started off, somebody had a connection with Mifflinburg Lumber, and these people had a computer system which brought us some of these drawings. They were gonna get us some help as far as the building aspects go, as far as material costs. It kind of fell by the wayside, and it kind of started fast, and in a way, I'm kind of glad it may have fell by the wayside as far as them, because really, if we're doing something in Sunbury, we should probably try to utilize a Sunbury business. So due to that, I've been with True Build Lumber, talked to Greg Garbin, and if we did some kind of construction, we would spend the extra money and do it with a brand called AZEC. Anybody ever hear that? Everybody's used to.
Trax.
The Trax stuff, and there's, so everybody uses Scotch tape, Scotch tape, that's just a brand. Trax, Trax is just a brand, but it's the positive stuff that lots kind of rub. So this AZEC is a competitive company. We think they may have interest in helping us build something financially, only because their name's getting out there and everybody says the word Trax. So that's a little thing we're working on. But where I'm coming to you folks is, is would you want something like this? Is it, is it something you would like? Is it something on a pretty grandiose scale? You look in front of you, you have something that's roughly seventy feet long, I think it was twenty-eight or thirty feet wide. That can all be changed. Would you want, you wouldn't want one big thing? Would we want at front, kind of towards Front and Market area, would you want to go have smaller ones, maybe at two different spots? Again, purpose is viewing. You have that little gazebo up there by the apartments, which obviously unfortunately got vandalized a couple times, but you can't get many people in there. And anyhow, again, this is just, just the idea. We need direction from you folks. I guess there's no sense going too much further with the idea, if it's not of interest. Again, we would never come back and ask for money from the city, because it'll all be an SRI project, we got it going.
All right. I just want to point out to the council members that in your packet, there is a copy of a letter from the municipal authorities. Their position on the project is that they would not, they would not support it. And so that letter is there if you want to look at that, and then for your discussion.
So I guess I have questions of letters from logs of last year. And since then, you said you've had a conversation with them about, so it says clearly though about, you know, that they have the water lines, two lines, high pressure pipelines, all that underneath the park, and then that's why they feel that they don't want anything built over it. Has any conversation been had since then about that part of it?
Yes.
With the.
Not, not to go any more elaboration than this, but so we're good out, we've been talking about this SRI for a year now, and trying to get along. We're good out somewhere, I think because of the Army Corps of Engineers are involved, and they kind of, they're, they're making it rather difficult because of rules, and then we thought, that's okay, because we can be fifteen feet away from that wall, and we're still good. Before I answer that question, if you look at Front and Market Street, the land is kind of half-mooned. To build a deck even fifteen feet back and to see over the wall, the floor of that deck doesn't even have to be three feet off the ground. We tested it out, so it's not like a real hot deck. It's just the way that curvature of the land is. But anyhow, getting back to your, all right, Chris. So I received this letter kind of out of the clear blue sky, and it just kind of hit me wrong. So I immediately went right to the person who signed that letter.
Yeah.
And all I'm gonna say is, the person who signed that letter knew nothing about the letter. So I'm gonna leave it at that right now, probably for another discussion. So anyhow, I'm coming to you folks, and sure, we're gonna get everybody involved, but first step is here. So think about it, talk about it, and if you want us to pursue this further, good. If not, that's okay, it'll be easier. But, go ahead.
Maybe we can review some stuff, because I have some questions. I'm sure others have some questions. One of the questions I have will be on this, that extent of it. But maybe then we can just sit down and collect, get together, it doesn't have to be a meeting because maybe we can sit down and just discuss questions and stuff like that sometime.
Yeah.
I would pledge to a meeting. The municipal authority, you're saying that not all of the board? I mean, to me, if they're against it and they have reasons of why they're against it, to me, I don't know, to me, that's a no-go at that point. So I almost wonder if it would be something Jody would be willing to reach out to the municipal authority or attend a board meeting and just gauge their interest level and why they sent this, or why this came out. Because, you know, rather than I spend a lot of time talking about it on that, if they're flat out against it and they show reasons why, I wouldn't see spending the money or the time to, you know, pursue it further if they can justify the reason why, that makes sense. That's my suggestion.
That's truly my, that's, that's a good approach. But my bigger question is, the person signature who's on that, it's funny that they don't know anything about the letter.
Now, I feel natural.
And I'd like to know how that got developed and sent out without that person's knowledge. That's a kind of interest for me.
What do you want?
Uh, some very revitalization.
But your company was the Spark, yes?
Spark is the committee.
It's.
Sunbury Pride and Renaissance Coalition.
May I ask one quick question, please? You know, I don't know if anybody's familiar with Oxen Hill, Maryland, where MGM put in a casino. They have a carousel as well as Atlantic City. Why couldn't we have something like that where the platform is going out like in front of the Ample Theater, pretty much on the river, but it comes up high enough so that if the river rises, it doesn't affect what's, what's built on there?
I think you'd have a lot of issues just because of the river itself.
Exactly. The river's been a great.
Yeah.
Well, these other cities are doing it, and it's successful and it's bringing money to the communities, but just a thought.
So that's something, of course, that if we had a strategic plan, and a part of that strategic plan was to develop a tourist interest area or something like that, then we would pursue something like that, but that's not the matter before us at this point.
Okay.
Right.
How many people do you think will put on this?
Well, obviously, the size is to be, we just were guessing, maybe seventy by thirty or something, and there's weight structures, we had, we had some engineering things. But again, I think if you wanted to go forward with it, then you have also to give us some directional width, size, and a location. And I, I think it would change, it's, it changes as you're talking about, if it's feasible. And then again, the other thing we ran into, and we have that as part of our design process, the structure would have to be movable, because if you needed to get that wall in an emergency flood situation, it has to be movable, so you'd put cement, things down in the ground. So our, our structural process was to put, however the, the big beams, the six-by-sixes would go to support, you would just have those metal brackets on top of the cement that would hold it in place like this, and the weight of the structure itself would keep it from moving. And then the sections, as you looked in that front page, the reason you have all those rows there, the sections would be built separately, because you bolted together. So in an emergency, you could unbolt it separately. So that was part of the process.
Thank you for your time. Yeah.
Okay. So the next item is the Peddling Soliciting Revision of Code Ordinance, the first reading. This has to do with Chapter 124, the City Ordinance Peddling Soliciting Posed Revision as follows in Section 124-6, Individuals or Organizations Exempt from Licensing Fee Requirements. Paragraph A, the following individuals, organizations, or agents thereof, although subject to all other provisions of this chapter and required to register under Section 124-7 below, are exempted from the licensing fee requirements only of this chapter. Number one, farmers engaged in selling only the produce of their own farms. And then in, number two, this is where the change would be, individuals or organizations engaged in the sale or free distribution of goods, wares, and merchandise donated by the owner thereof, the proceeds whereof are to be applied to any charitable or philanthropic purposes or from which no proceeds are derived. So the changes are there, the free distribution of goods and the situation where there are no proceeds derived.
I make that motion, we accept that as first reading.
Second.
Reese?
Yes.
Aister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Reichtner?
Yes.
Reichtner?
Yes.
Okay. Brush policy update. Since we instituted a new brush policy, we have had a number of residents call us with feedback on the policy. And so we have displayed up here on the table for anyone to look at as you pass by, the seating, we've seen them is, is kind of the, the real reason why we needed to do the change to the brush policy. When the city picks up bag yard waste, leaves, weeds, whatever, what happens is, we get lots and lots of plastic bags that we have to take them to the brush pile, dump them, and then get rid of the pla, the plastic bags. That's one. But when we dump them, we're finding that there's a lot of household trash mixed in, a lot of household trash. So where people are filling up a lot of the bag with their trash and then putting leaves and stuff on top to disguise it, I imagine, and then leaving it out for the city, sneaky people, leaving it out for the, for the city to have to deal with. And so what happens is, just in a, a one-week time, you pick up, and there's, I don't know, a couple hundred bags of, that have to be empty. And so the week that they did this, it was thirty man-hours for the, for the crew to go through. So five guys for six hours out of the day, going through and cleaning all them, and two truckloads of trash that we had to take to the transfer station. So that's an example of exactly why we needed to change the brush policy. That being said, we did need to clarify some of the, the information in there. We had some conflicting information about how the city would accept or not accept some things, and that is in the, this updated version where it states in the middle of the page, brush must not. Line number two, I, we had to remove some of the things out of there. So brush must not include stumps, vines, grass clippings, sod, roots, or root balls. We had listed in there leaves and things. They, the brush can, if you pile up your brush at this, at your curb, it can include leaves, it can include weeds, as long as you've shaken most of the sod out of the, out of the weeds. You can either pile those things up at the curb, and the city will come and scoop it up, or you can, what's easier is if you have an unlined trash bin or romaine tub or whatever, that you can put the, those things, those loose things in, and then the, and when the city comes by, you just pick up the tub, dump it into the truck, and then leave your empty container there. So that's just a clarification of the brush policy and also a demonstration of why we had to go to that policy. Grass clippings, again, we will not be picking them up at all, but you can still bring your grass clippings to the brush pile, and you probably have to bring them in a tub or, or a bag, and then dump it out when you got there.
Just to add on to that, we were, with this, being lenient for a little while with it and still picking up the stuff, but starting to leave this week, we're not gonna be as lenient with it. But if for some reason they are not picking up, then leaving the policy there for residents to know why they didn't have their stuff picked up. Sadly, it doesn't just sit there and they're wondering why and why it's not getting picked up. So maybe next week they can comply with the policy, so now it's just in the dark, trying to figure it out.
Where is this location? Is this still behind the riders?
It's still behind riders, yeah.
Chris, I think eventually, going to the can would be the answer.
It's the easier way. Just put it in a can without anything in it. Yeah. Not everyone has those. We don't make, buys them, but we do have.
Christmas is next, sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
First, the next topic is changing rooms at the ice rink. There is a proposal from Mr. O'Brien, who runs the Sunbury, or the Cecil Hannah Valley Stampede Ice Hockey, Youth Ice Hockey Program. He has a number of kids, you know, over fifty kids and fifteen and twenty helping parents in there in the rink. We only have the two locker rooms right now that are on the bathing, the swimming pool side of the, of the building, and, and it's often overcrowded. Sometimes the youth events are up against the, the adult men then coming in to have their, their hockey games, and so you'll have adults and youth changing in the same locker room, which is not a good situation to have. There's also more girls and women participating in ice hockey, and so there's a lack of changing room areas for them as well, when you have multiple teams participating. So Mr. O'Brien designed a, just a couple of changing rooms that could be installed in a otherwise kind of dead space in the, in the rink area, and it would not be locker rooms per se, there would be no plumbing, it's just an area that's a, a separate room for changing and, and into your hockey gear. This did go, was discussed at the recreation park? I'm sorry, Mr. Aister, I don't.
Too briefly, but we don't really have the details, right? Stump and movement and everything without the details.
Okay.
Talked to JD the other day, we're still working on funding, we're still working on design, so we haven't moved too far since our last conversation.
Okay. All right. So we're, that is just, this then is just for information to let you know that we're working on that project. It will satisfy a need that is, is, is at the, at the rink and could help to even grow the, the hockey programs even more if we have that available.
I'm still working very hard on it.
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Yes.
Next topic is hiring of two part-time PPW employees, Mr. Paul Russo, Mr. Derek Kachinsky, I believe is how you pronounce his name, at ten dollars an hour. Recommend that the council approve the hiring of those two part-time employees at ten dollars an hour.
Yeah, I'll make that.
Carlovich?
Yes.
Kramer? Reiner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Ister?
And then the next topic is that because it will be, the next council meeting will not be held in May because of Memorial Day, and the next one won't be until June, there is room in the budget for DPW to hire another, one more part-time employee, and what I'm asking for is an approval by the council for Mr. Walker, DPW supervisor, to hire one more part-time employee yet to be named at ten dollars an hour.
Kramer? Kramer? Reiner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
All part-time, yeah. In total, we have four, we're hoping to hire, we hired one, there are two more tonight, one more, four part-time employees.
We have tax exemptions of four hundred, or eight hundred forty-eight dollars and two cents. We have ten people on the list, most of which are deceased or they don't live. So I'd like to make that a motion that we exonerate these people.
Second.
Reese?
Yes.
Ister? Carlovich?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Reiner?
Yes.
And then I would also like to make a motion that we pay from the general fund, three hundred thirty-three thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars and twenty-four cents, and from local fuel, four thousand eighty-seven dollars and seventy-eight cents. I'd like to make that a motion that we pay the.
Ister?
Yes.
Carlovich?
Yes.
Kramer? Reiner?
Yes.
Reese?
All right, announcements, the upcoming city council meetings, May twenty-seventh, there is no meeting in observance of Memorial Day. June tenth, it'll be held in these council chambers. June twenty-fourth, it'll be held in the Sunbury Masonic Lodge across the street on Market Street on the second floor. The next Heart and Heritage two hundred and fiftieth anniversary committee meeting is June twenty-sixth at six P.M. in these council chambers. The mulch giveaway is Saturday, May eighteen, from seven A.M. to twelve P.M. The New Year's Eve committee meeting is May twenty-two at six P.M. in these council chambers, and the National Suicide Hotline, the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline is one eight hundred two seven three eight two five five. Is there any audience comment now?
I have one comment, Chris, before you leave, before you leave, and I watch, that's May eighteen, which is this weekend, so if you want to talk to Chris before you get out of here.
He did, he talked to you prior to the meeting.
We did, okay.
Yeah, we're good.
Thank you.
I'm forward.
I just wanted to comment about the brush pile thing, because when I, well, as Joel knows, I took him a copy and I'm trying to be like, which I apologize for, but I did talk to Steve, who was an extremely nice man, he came up to my house and talked to me about it, so that's how I got the updated policy, because he brought me, and he brought me some from my neighbors as well, and he did take what, well, he didn't personally, but he had them come pick up what I had in bags, because it had been sitting out there at that time for a few weeks, and my neighbors who are all a lot older, and I can guarantee that they are not on the internet Googling the, you know, Sunbury City, or the city of Sunbury's policies, or, you know, and I know they're not here, so I did, I have been informing my neighbors, because I still see people putting it in bags, so I have been saying stuff to people, even though that's not really my job to do it, but I just wanted to, I do agree, like, I mean, that is a lot of plastic waste, and it is a good idea to put in something, especially that it's going to be reusable for you, like, it's not really, wasn't that big of a deal once, you know, calm down and put it up. But I just want to say, like, you are going to need to find a way to reach more people, because like, even as of yesterday, I was seeing people still putting stuff in their, you know, out during their yard work and putting it in bags, and, you know, it is a little creepy for me to be looking down my window like, you can't be doing that, you gotta put it, I haven't been saying that that way, but you know what I mean, like, so maybe finding a better way to reach more people.
That's what I was trying to say, when they're not picking it up, they're leaving the policy there, so that's the only way, if you're really reaching people, you're going to go and do it, and then you're going to see that they leave the brush and then leave the policy open.
Well, my, Norm Gessner lives across the street from me, I let him know today, because he has two bags sitting there, he recently did, he didn't receive a policy, he had no idea, he's like, I would have just let it sit there while someone came and got it, so, you know, not everybody is.
Right, so tomorrow they'll go around again.
Yeah.
Tomorrow's Tuesday, they'll go around again.
Although where he puts it, it could be kind of hidden from the cars, because he puts it on, like, that's right where the cars park on that side of pilot, so maybe just let them be, you know, try to, you know, be able.
And people can still call the number and say, hey, I have had these sitting out here for a while, and, you know, people is pretty good about working with people, we need to start making it mistake.
Well, he gave me a bunch of updated copies, and I did hand them out to some of my neighbors who I know, that's how they spend their time, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Did you have a suggestion or missing a way to get on board with people, because we sent a paper?
I mean, I.
That's what I'm saying, I'm trying to get a way to get them on board.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, honestly, I, besides just, besides just making sure every resident has, you know, I mean, and I know that that's fine, to me, and I.
So you want, it's like nine thousand copies.
Well, I think one thing for Up on the Hill is maybe contacting Natalie Wortman and seeing, they do have a lot of volunteers who hand out the Hill Neighborhood Letter, maybe doing something like that, and just maybe seeing if she can get sort of same volunteers that hand out a Hill Neighborhood Letter, because they managed to get that letter.
Okay.
Yeah, or you could just do that, I mean.
If you want a copy, have a call.
Yeah, that would be one way to maybe reach people, that's all I wanted to say, and I apologize to Joel for standing.
We'll direct all the future calls to you.
Thank you.
I just would like to tell everybody, remind them that this Saturday, when the Sonic Temple, they are having a breakfast for veterans and first responders, if you want to spread the word down there, and after we're banners are hung up, that's all I want to say. I am making the painting.
Thanks. Hi, Bob Snyder, I just wanted to find out about tree vitalization. I understand that you contacted Linda Culver's office about that, and I wondered if you had heard anything back from their office with regard to grant opportunities for tree vitalization. I don't know how the rest of the people feel about it, but as the owner of property on Market Street, I think the current trees, I think we need trees on Market Street, I think it's important to, it keeps it cooler and it looks wonderful, but I believe those trees have outgrown their usefulness, because they are constantly causing a mess, they're raising the sidewalks, they have great nets adjacent to my property, it's raised it significantly, Sonic Building has raised it significantly, and I believe there is an opportunity to get some money through tree vitalization to have something done with these trees. I also understand that you need to have a shade tree commission, I'm more than willing to volunteer as one of the members of that. I think we certainly need people with much greater knowledge of trees than myself. I know what I don't like, I do know that, I believe I was actually on council when we talked about getting the trees that we have, and I believe it was Penn State that suggested them, they're terrible, they make a mess all the time, even when they're not blooming or putting the, it's like a berry, but it's not really a berry, but it's a miniature pear, I guess, it's a pear tree of some sort, there's always a mess with the trees, and now they are growing to the point where they're definitely lifting our sidewalks, which means the city's trees are ruining the sidewalks that we, as the owners, are responsible to fix, which again is kind of like the catch twenty-two, you put in the tree, we got the mess. So I think there's probably an answer to this, I'm hoping that the answer is removing these trees, putting in new ones, but I would like to know where we kind of stand with that, and apparently it's a once-a-year grant process, so again, that's got to be time-sensitive, this is only from one thing I've gotten back from their office, so I'm just asking you if there is an urgency, let's say it's July or August, that we need to get moving and get committee together and do our due diligence to get this happen.
They put a whole bunch up at the rink, around the parking lot.
He means.
Yeah, I'm talking about.
I would think there's trees there.
Well.
Well, back to the grant, which was Joey, and first of all, second of all, getting the trees is the easy part.
Sure, taking it up slightly.
And redoing the sidewalks is the cost. I know you would like to cut them all down, that's why you want that, you chainsaw it down.
Well, I would, some might feel missing, who knows? But I would, I would like to see, not jettisoning it, it is a mess, it should be addressed.
You and I talked about it the other day, and the main cost is taking it out and correcting the sidewalk issues, getting the trees is the easy part.
Sure, and I agree with that, but we can't ignore the fact that it's happening, and I would hope that we would find a way to address both problems, because it's only going to get worse, it's not going to get better, the trees are going to continue to grow, more sidewalks are going to get ruined, so I would like to be in front of this versus behind it. It's just my opinion, but I'm asking.
You're saying about the grant, the grant issue wouldn't do us any good, because the trees would show up and we're not prepared outside, removal and so forth, there's.
I have no idea what the grant is.
No, you said you were, it's really there.
I was reading that there was one, and that they're communicating with you, and you would be able to tell them, that's what it said.
But I think we should back up and get a plan, cost per block, what's the cost to remove, there's people want to start, and the follow-up with grant.
I would think that might make sense, but since we don't have anybody to have a shade tree commission, you can't even apply for the grant, because you can't apply for the grant without a shade tree commission, catch twenty-two, right? So I'm saying, I'm willing to step up to it.
Yeah, so I do note that we haven't had a shade tree commission, so, and then I can talk to Councilman Ister about what our options are as far as the shade tree commission and its relationship with Parks and Rec, the Department of Parks and Rec, so that, like you're saying, we can acknowledge that there's an issue and then assess that problem, define the scope of the problem, and then see if we can come up with a plan to address the problem.
That's exactly, very succinctly, boy. Thank you, thank you, Robert.
Mark Gittens, Jasmine Street President, Max Bayer. I'm coming to ask for the council and the mayor to consider adding, removing the chapter fifty-eight, section one clause of no person, no firm or, or no preparation can have file in the, or poultry file in the city of Sunbury, and to change the no person and make a clause that single-family residents can have the ability to have in-home backyard chickens, egg-laying chickens. It would definitely enhance what I do in my gardening and just living here in the city with children, one of the most famous, or most of our country. Cities all over the United States have the ability, there may be limited permits, there's a lot of specific things and clauses that you can put in, I think it's a great way of winking at our single-family residents that have nice-sized properties, there's setbacks, there's limitations, of course, there's, you know, fees, and those things is kind of designed for people who are not for sale, you can't sell anything you produce for family use, just basically enjoyment. I actually put together a packet for each and every one of a sample of a city that actually has it, and also questions that you as a city council would ask each other to kind of say, we need to figure out what the setback would be, what the limit of chickens would be, you know, and those kinds of things. So as you can see, it's just, this is actually a sample one, there's noise ordinances and all those types of things, but coop designs and stuff to be approved, permit fees and these things, I think it would really enhance, I know that sometimes we're kind of like addressing the bad kid in the room sometimes with some of our policies, and probably not rewarding citizens that are doing fabulous and exactly what we want here in our city, so this is kind of like, this is not about fixing something or addressing an issue, it's trying to add something, making Sunbury a better place to live for us middle-class and upper-class people who want to have the hobbies and the things. So with that, I mean, I don't know, there's things that it may take time for you guys to look through and figure out what to do, but to even make a trial run and maybe limit in the first year that you're able to really pass one of these things, where you may give out so many licenses in the city, to have the time to reevaluate things, make sure it's good for our city and all of our, whoever's participating, that's some of the things you can do, make sure that it's only for detached homes. I'm willing to help you, I hobby-farmed for many, many years before moving into the city of Sunbury, I'm willing to kind of help, guide, and give some direction with that in mind, I don't know if you have any questions.
This is a sample ordinance like you typed up?
No, that is actually a functioning one.
What's your, you know.
I'll have to look that one up.
Do that, because we'll, we'll.
Okay, that would be good. Perfect.
Yeah, I had, I actually had people reach out to me about this throughout the week, I guess you had a pretty good social media presence about this.
About a hundred and ninety signatures.
Okay, that's what I was going to ask, how many have, a hundred and ninety?
Yeah.
So the benefit for the single families, what, the eggs?
The experience.
Okay.
And you have a hobby.
Having, you know, whether you have dogs, we have, you know, whatever, it's just for the experience, for the lifestyle, I have, I actually, I'm in Sunbury, but I have plum trees that I make plum belly every year, I have blueberry bushes, I have an extensive perennial garden, kind of like the Martha Stewart of Sunbury here, so. So, well, so, and this is part of the addition to that, like I said, there's limits of numbers and breed and different things, just like you would do anyway, and it has a way of being able to pay itself as far as supervision and stuff because of the fees and things like that, and inscriptions every so many years, depending on what you guys decide.
I'd like to have your, we're going to look into it, I'd like to have your contact information.
I will definitely add it. Any other question?
Well, thanks for bringing this to us, I wish more residents would get involved about trying to enact changes in the city. Any other audience comment tonight?
Regina Russell, Democratic Committee Woman for Ward Two. First, I'd like to commend the mayor and the council, I guess, the webpage looks really good, very informative, the layout, the pictures, I'm very impressed, I've never seen everyone's picture on the website since I've been here. Another thing, I was wondering, we used to get a quarterly newsletter, and that stopped at some point, and maybe in the quarterly newsletter like they do in Snyder and Union County, that's where they inform the residents of any changes in the ordinances, or when the bush, with this, the issue with the bushes, the bush policy, they would get that, so that would be door-to-door, because when I first came here, and maybe it stopped about four or five years ago, they did used to go door-to-door and read notices letting the residents know that we were going to have different changes, very similar to the flyer that we get to with the schedule of the street cleaning, okay? I was wondering about the poop scoop and the cigarette butts, I really love that idea. In most cities, there's a fine, and the fine helps to defray the courts, because there is going to be a course to the city to provide plastic bags and the containers in which people would put the, when they scoop up the poop. in which people would put the, when they sweep up the poop, to put it in the step tools, unless you want them to put them in the trash can.
And we do have a fine for people that do that, but it's hard to cite someone if there's no proof of who left the doggy dog.
I understand that, but in New York City and D C. and other cities, if they're caught and it's an officer and sees it, then they go ahead and they get the fine. So I I never heard anything about there being a fine, which maybe when you have a a small sign posted with those recette tools that the person knows or when people are walking their dogs, they can see that they'll be fined if they don't pick up the dog poop. I'm at the Y a lot, they have signs around the property that tell people do not sign, do not smoke around the property, but yet there's smoking around the property and they haven't been able to do much about that. So where um Councilman Ister said that in city you can say, but you can't smoke in um the parks, that would be very difficult because people gonna go ahead and smoke anyway. I don't know how you can handle that unless you give out fines as well. But I just am putting that out there, that the Y does have that and people still smoking, there's a lot of cigarette butts that they have to sweep up around the Y all the time. Um, I wanna also commend the mayor for going around to different cities and looking and talking to business owners as well as elected officials to see what it is that they're doing to make their city grow. In my opinion, housing would be a good fix because if you have, um, I guess, developers or you put out some sort of call for investors to come and look at the city, see what they can do about buildings, you probably already had it. But they can come in, they can gut these buildings out, they can renovate them, make them out of condominiums. And if you have something that's going to um look good, it's gonna be modern, it's gonna draw in young people and people who wanna come and work in the city instead of commuting back and forth, that's just my suggestion and I think it's a good one, it'll work. We don't have condominiums, when I first came to this area, people didn't know where a condominium was. Now they have it over in um Union County, I believe it is. So um, I'm hoping that uh you'll look into doing that as well. Um, with the community group, was it you, Councilman Reese, that said, uh, you're forming a community group? Or was it the gentleman from the Spark uh who's gonna form a community group and get together on making decisions?
Regarding what?
Was, when he was talking about?
No, we, I said, there was a, this is about the Federal Opportunities Office. Um, we had met with Senator Dorsey's office and Representative Political Culver's office about how we can take advantage of those a little bit more. So I said we were gonna form a group about that and then also that can lead right into the strategic plan because the people at the table for that conversation would be the same people that would should be at the table for the strategic plan conversation.
Okay, so you're not forming a new group and it's a a community group or some kind of commission where people are gonna be helping to make decisions or?
I mean, kind of, I don't know what you're looking for exactly, yes, but we're gonna bring people in for that, so it's not like a, we're not forming a committee, I guess you'd say.
Alright, um, thank you. And another thing, please, I think, are we gonna be selling the Crown vehicle and then using those funds uh as a down payment or something toward the police vehicle of thirty-seven thousand?
It's most likely the option.
The auction's off, it's not carrying it, what's that?
And then money goes to the city or does it go toward the vehicle?
General fund.
Into the general fund, alright, thank you very much.
Any other audience comment?
Stephanie, sir. Um, first of all, problem one, uh, there's a lot of potholes in this city. Penn State has a hotline, we have, we have to offer us, Penn State has a hotline that we can call if we see it on our roadway, that we have in the city.
What's our, I don't know what time we have?
Five seven zero two eight six seven eight two zero.
There it is.
Okay, secondly, mine neighborhood, uh, the homes immediately surrounded mine, you know, a lot of children, two homes that have license foster care. There are over twenty children who fight in that area, it's a one-way street. And the FedEx truck nearly hit me today, it's walking out, people in the car, um, there's, the, I don't know.
Is it for slow children at playtime?
There's one on the block, we, my neighbor was there.
Oh, eleven hundred block of Court Street. Okay.
Uh, yeah, uh, then my neighbor said, can we have a speed limit sign up there perhaps?
I would say, yeah, just, was that a market?
I got it.
Yeah, they call, so we, so anytime someone's called, we just gone out and looked at it, like we just did with the alley. You know, we go and we look at the situation, we assess it, and if it needs it, we put something in and we have to put it on the, we've done that a couple times now.
So the eleven hundred block of Court Street, uh-
It starts at eleven.
And then comes down, curves around, back down to Market, yeah, where my parents.
Oh, I know, okay, I know your parents.
So, um, yeah, so you mean, there's a lot of kids playing in that alley or something?
Yeah, and they'll play in the street and in the, it was good for parental supervision, but there's still-
So we'll look, yeah.
We don't want an accident that Mr. Hammond has.
I'll let, I'll pass it down to uh DPW, I'll pass it on to DPW, if you can put up, uh, if we can put up some signs, if it's a speed limit sign or slow children playing sign, something, but, yeah.
There's one out there and play with it.
Yeah, it's, it's, you know, a sign doesn't necessarily uh prevent people from-
You must have been going around areas and wanting to put slow or stop right on the ground as well, so if you're missing signs, you know, you either paint it on the ground, it's really silly, so, yeah, a lot of things that they're feeling.
Thank you very much. Some of the cities, some of the three, okay.
Any other um audience comment?
Although, um, not on behalf of us, or I, I just wanted-
Just state your name.
Thank you, that's my fault. Um, the, um, I know there are, that's why I was attempting to submit for a facade grant program and so they're looking for applications and those are due by this Friday, so if anybody had been thinking about it and hasn't applied yet or you know anybody who might benefit from it, please, if you're sent, you'll apply. Um, also, I'm with uh some very old-town neighborhood group, we've been working on facades in the downtown just doing very basic spruce up, just um scraping, painting, cleaning type of things. And so our next um, our next work party, I guess, is this Saturday, um, maybe key. If anybody would like to volunteer, please get a contract, we appreciate it, thanks.
Thank you. Any other audience comment? Alright, with that, thank you all for coming out tonight, the meeting is now adjourned. Corey?